So, we are going to start the Minnehaha County Commission meeting. And I forgot to mention this before. If you have a cellphone, I'd suggest silencing it, because I didn't do that to my own. If you need a listening device, see one of the county staff. And the documents for the meeting are on the corner of the, by Commissioner Hyburger. Look for, so I call this to order. Going to begin our meeting, looking for a motion to approve our agenda.
So moved.
Benninga.
And with a question?
Yes.
Are we doing the recognition of this?
Yep. I'll get to that. I figured I'd approve the agenda first.
I have a motion to approve the agenda, second.
In favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Alrighty, motion, our agenda is approved. Commissioner Hyburger was mentioning is, two weeks ago, at the state county, state Association of County officials, county commissioners, the South Dakota Public Assurance Alliance and the South Dakota Municipal Workers' Compensation Fund recognized the employees of Minnehaha County with a gold level certificate for their activity that has kept our loss, losses down and our people safe, so just a recognition. And Melinda, Doug Blomker's usually here. Do you want to come up and take this on behalf of the employees of the county? Thank you very much. You bet. Representing our safety committee, so alrighty. Okay, so we already approved our agenda. And look for a motion to approve our meeting minutes from September 21st, 2021.
So moved.
Second. Bender.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Bills to be paid, $593,056.88.
Pay the bills.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor? I'm sorry.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Bills to be paid are approved. We have reports from the Minnehaha County Regional Juvenile Detention Center for August, and the Minnehaha County Abandoned Cemetery Board Minutes for August of 2021. Moving on to personnel actions, look for a motion to approve routine personnel actions.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Barth, second by Benninga.
Bender.
By Bender.
The other B.
The other B. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign.
Mr. Chairman, if your last name doesn't start with B, you don't count for much.
Yeah, I can tell that. Sorry, Commissioner Hyburger, you and me.
Yeah, we're out there.
Halfway through the alphabet, and I'm still last. Look for, okay, we have no applications for abatements, no notices and requests, no planning and zoning notices, and no petitions for compromise lien. We are now at the opportunity for public comment for anybody who would be here for a non-agenda item, if they'd like to address the commission. Now is your opportunity. Seeing nobody hurrying up to the podium, we'll move on to our regular business, which we begin with the second reading and public hearing to consider ordinance amendment 2105 to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County regarding Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson, this is going to sound familiar, because we just heard it like five minutes ago. But for those of you at home that maybe just have tuned in, we are, this is the time and place of a public hearing to consider amending our zoning ordinance to regulate how we deal with medical cannabis or medical marijuana. And the, as we know, the state adopted, we had a vote, and we have voted in medical marijuana, the use of medical cannabis, and now we, as a county commission, will need to regulate the zoning of that. And before you is an amendment to our zoning ordinance, which would outline, would provide a definition of what a medical cannabis dispensary is. And then it is identical to the ordinance that we just adopted, and it uses the same criteria to set forth how we, how we would regulate it. And this would be a permitted special use within the C commercial and the I-1 zoning districts. And then it also then adopts the same 11 criteria that we just reviewed. And those, once again, for those that may have just tuned in at home, they have, the dispensary would have to be registered with the State of South Dakota Department of Health, has to meet all their requirements. There's a setback requirement of 1,000 feet between that dispensary and a residence, a church, a school, a daycare, a public use facility, or a park, or, and between any other medical cannabis dispensary. It outlines the fact that there are some location requirements. You're not allowed to have a drive-through or exterior sales. It sets forth a maximum hours of operation. It controls nuisances. It regulates the age of people that can enter the business. It prohibits the use of medical cannabis on the site. And it requires some information from the applicant, such as a disposal plan, a security plan, a fire protection plan, and a site plan, which includes a floor plan on how the building, how the business would be set up. If it meets those criteria and is located within the I-1 with a light industrial or the C commercial, and it meets the licensing requirements that are going to be set forth by the county commission, it would be a permitted special use. If it does not meet those requirements, they still could apply for a conditional use permit, which would prompt a hearing in front of the planning commission and potentially subsequently in front of you if it was appealed. So, that being said, this has gone before the planning commission at our last meeting in August, and it has been recommended for approval. I'd be glad to answer any questions. This is a public hearing, so I will stand by for any questions.
Commissioner Barth.
Scott, I think I read or heard that the city of Sioux Falls is letting some of these things be changed if they get a conditional use permit. So, let's say there's a house on one side of the Big Sioux River within 1,000 feet of an operation on the other side of the river, potentially, that would fulfill the intent of the 1,000-foot separation without, and they could come forward and ask for a conditional use to be less than 1,000 feet.
That's correct. That's one of the criteria. And if they didn't meet that criteria, there's always the option that they apply for a conditional use permit.
So this is a public hearing? Anybody here to speak in favor? Anybody opposed to this ordinance? Now's your opportunity to speak. Alrighty, I'll turn it over to the commission for action.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Benninga.
Motion by Hyburger, second by Benninga. Roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Benninga?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to the same subject matter, but a reading to consider adoption of an ordinance establishing the licensing and regulation of medical cannabis dispensaries in Minnehaha County. We just talked about zoning. This is regarding licensing. And this is the second reading, and there have been a few changes, I guess. Eric, would you like to address that, or is it necessary?
Chairman, Eric Boggs, State Attorney's Office. I would, first of all, like to take this opportunity to thank Scott Anderson and everybody in planning and zoning. They made this process look remarkably easy. It's the classic calm duck above the water where they are furiously churning below, but they worked very well with their municipal counterparts. I wanted to say thank you for all that help. It made my end of things a little easier. Yes, Ms. Chairman, that is an understatement, possibly, but most of those changes, I did hand out a little review, section by section, or page by page, to highlight most of the changes from the version that you saw at the first reading versus the version you're seeing today. You'll see a substantial number of those are just reference grammatical changes, because it was important to keep the nomenclature the same throughout the ordinance. So I removed the word dispensary and asserted the word establishment, so that it was consistent throughout the ordinance. But there were a few other changes. Probably the most important one is the one that you decided or informed me that your preference would be to have just one licensed issued. With that, Ms. Chairman, I would tell you that it is my recommendation, and this may alter how you want to handle the rest of the hearing today, even though the requirement that the legislature imposed on municipalities back in 2016 that said any substantial change to an ordinance between the first and second reading would require an additional reading does not technically apply to the counties. Given the sensitivity, the public interest in this particular topic, it would be my recommendation that you actually do have one additional reading with this to give not only yourselves time to digest the changes, but to make sure the public is very comfortable and versed. I did give a copy of the highlighted changes to the media as well, so they would be able to follow along. It's not, again, required. It is up to you, but my recommendation, not only for yourselves to have more time to digest this, but to allow the public to have that time as well. Happy to go through those changes now if you would like, if you would prefer to have your own time to look that over and have additional time if you choose to have a second reading. The other thing that I would point out that is important for you in that consideration on a first, second, and/or now considered third reading would be that the ordinance, temporary ordinance that you passed back in June did say that you would have 60 days from the time that the state promulgated their rules, in which time that you would have to adopt more permanent ordinance. So the state rules actually will not be finalized in final promulgation until October 5th. So you don't have a time constraint, is I guess my comfort level to all of you, to know that we're even before that now, let alone the 60 days that you would have after that point. So with that, I'll stand by for questions or direction from you, Ms. Chairman.
I'm going to look for input from the commission. We have the option of passing this today, or giving the public another week to read this, and ourselves another week to read this, and moving the second hearing to October 5th? Okay. So, discussion. Commissioner Bender.
I don't see any downside to doing that. I think the more opportunity you have to educate both the public and ourselves is just for the better, for good government. So I'd be fully in favor of that.
I see a lot of head nodding, so, and I always like following the advice of my attorneys, so it's a good, good thing to do. So I'm going to look for a motion to delay.
Before we take action, if I could just take a little liberty, I won't try to blur along the meeting, but just to give you a little bit of things to look for as you're going through, I already mentioned one of the grammatical changes. There were some, some questions, and I, this is another opportunity for me to say thank you to Auditor Kite and his staff, because they were the folks that would have to administer this. They gave a very careful review. I had several meetings with them. Based on a lot of their concerns or questions is where some of the more substantial changes, again, not changes to the intent or purpose of the ordinance, but clarification language, that if you were to see a redline version of this, you would think, wow, there's a lot of changes. But actually, it's the same basic structure that was there before, just spelled out a little bit more clearly, so that his office will know exactly how to administer the ordinance going forward. So to that, again, I would say thank you. But, so I would look to those particular sections, some of which, somewhat based on recent conversations in my office, I was a little skittish of using the word lottery. So I took the word lottery out. Now it's referred to a random selection process, so that when the applications come in, it doesn't matter in which order they're received. Once they're all received and the deadline expires, they're put in a bucket essentially, or whatever manner that Auditor Kite and his staff will choose, and then they're drawn out in that order. From that order, then, they will be reviewed to make sure they're complete. If they're not complete, they're just essentially thrown out at that point. But they're presented to you in the order, if they're, if they are complete, in the order in which they are put in that random selection process. So it doesn't really matter. We didn't feel comfortable, I certainly didn't feel comfortable with the first come, first served, because it would create an argument at the window as to who gets their hand through the slot first, and who's actually stamped first. And this is, provides some purely random aspect to this, and, and again, they would have to still be complete. So if it's possible, somebody will come in and not have all their, their boxes checked. So that's one area I would draw your attention to. The actual process, the hearing that's required that all of you will then have before the actual, just like a liquor license, where you would have a hearing, a public hearing, to allocate that license that you are going to award. One additional thing, there was some concern about the inactivity and also the suspension revocation process. I'd actually ask all of you to take a little time to read those sections as well. The, the theory that I've adopted in the draft is that the purpose of having this is twofold. One is, of course, the voters asked that we do this. Second thing is that if you're going to have one of these available in Minnehaha County, that you actually do want it active. That language was in the previous draft. It was just spelled out a little more clearly now. If it's inactive for a period of 60 consecutive, rather than 60 cumulative days is how it was worded in the original draft, so now it would have to be 60 days in a row that is inactive. At that point, you can consider it inactive and essentially take the license back, and then go through the process of issuing the license again. Yes, sir?
Just question of the use "may" versus "will." I mean, that gives some discretion and maybe some inconsistency in, in what could be done? Your thoughts on that?
Certainly. Ms. Chairman, I think that's an appropriate conversation. On the issue of inactivity, my, my theory, my drafting approach, if you will, is that inactivity by itself presumes that we know why they're inactive, or just simply that inactivity by itself is, is a failing. It is on certain levels, but as we all know, there's a story behind every set of circumstances that may occur. And somebody may actually come in and provide a very good excuse why they were 62 days inactive, and you may feel that it's appropriate in that particular circumstance that that's not an automatic revocation for inactivity. So on, on the inactivity thing, I think it's appropriate to allow you, you the discretion that it's not a mandatory shall revoke or take that license back. There are a list of criteria, it was in the previous draft as well, on issues that could result in suspension or revocation. Most of those did not change. If they changed, it was purely on a grammatical, stylistic, or clarification level, not an intent level. So if you'd look at those as well, I'd appreciate that. But those are more on the shell, the, the suspension revocation criteria, rather than the inactivity. So I hope I've answered your question on that.
I think so.
Okay.
Commissioner Hyburger?
Maybe their building burns down, and they're going to not build it up in 60 days, or maybe there's a pandemic and it's shut down for 62 days. So just something could happen.
Certainly.
If the building burns down, then the odor goes beyond the property line, then what do we do? I'm just kidding.
That's a problem, too.
Anyway, members of the commission, again, I'd just ask you, do, I think with Auditor Kite and his staff's assistance, I think this is what I would consider to be in final form. There may still be some philosophical changes that you would wish to adopt. I would suspect at this point, some, any of those particular changes would probably be minor, and not trigger that needing yet another reading after our, what would be considered third reading in October.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
So all of these have been already put into the document?
Right. You'll see it's labeled, if Melinda put it in the same way I labeled it, it's draft 11. So it's, if you have one that's not labeled 11, or if it's been renamed by her or her staff, I will certainly make sure that you have the most current version. But yes, everything on that list is, should be in the version that you have in front of you today.
So where we are, I think we're in agreement that we want to move this to October 5th, so I'd look for a motion to have the second reading on October 5th.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Barth, second by Hyburger. Comments? Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. October 5th it is. Thank you very much, Eric.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Chairman, I don't remember if the next item on the agenda is a resolution.
Nope. Budget. So, look for a motion to adopt our fiscal year 2022 budget for Minnehaha County. Auditor Kite, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioner Ben Kite, Auditor's Office. Yes, so I'm here today to ask for your support in adoption of the 2022 budget for Minnehaha Just to highlight some, some of the items on the budget. So the total, total budget is $104.3 million. To get to that amount, we did not use any additional opt-out dollars. The general fund, cash applied, we're using $6.8 million, and total cash applied for all funds of a little over $10 million. Including the budget, we are proposing that we use $858,000 to purchase FFNE and update the state's attorney's software. Also, within the budget, we're recommending we use 50% of the fund, 50% election cost, which is, we estimate around $350,000, from cash applied. The health insurance premium for employees increases at 15%. We have applied a matrix adjustment for employees at 2.5%. And we've, the budget includes four new positions for the county, one deputy public defender, two positions in the state's attorney's office, and one appraiser in training. We've also provided to you several schedules, a, one's a means of finance, there is a budget spreadsheet in the 2022 levies. The levies, again, I would point out to you, represent a decline of 2% compared to 2021. Also, this levy of 3.249 is the lowest levy rate we've had since 2012. So I think we, again, should be very proud of that. So those are the highlights of the 2022 budget. Have any questions? I'd be happy to answer those.
Questions? Concerns? Comments?
Mr. Chair, we've all battled out the whole budget for most of this year, most of every year, and so I think we're ready to move ahead on this.
Point made, Commissioner. I agree. We spent the better part of the last four months, for sure, at least, for the most part, weekly, discussing some of these things. So I have to thank the auditor and his staff. There are some very great suggestions, using cash applied to fund some one-time expenses, election, et cetera, instead of taking it out of our general fund. So I think that'll make a difference moving forward for us also. So I do need to take public input on this, since this is our budget hearing. Anybody from the public for or opposed to our 2022 budget? Not seeing any. I will look for an action from the commissioners.
Make a motion to approve this budget.
Second.
Benninga.
All right. I'm going to ask for you, roll call vote, please.
Benninga?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Ben.
Thank you.
Look for a motion to certify the results of the September 17th, 2021 election of Shatters Fourth Edition Road District, a few local elections here. Thanks, Ben.
Yes, so on September 17th, the property owner of Shatters Fourth Edition voted to form a road district. There was, there was one owner, that owner voted in favor. This canvas, you know, I provided the, our election results to you in the packet. If you had any questions on that, I'd be happy to answer those.
Was it a secret ballot?
Yes, it was.
Right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Hyburger, second by Bender. All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. And then three resolutions authorizing the restoration of the following tax deed properties to the former owners of title.
Did we miss 14?
I missed one.
We missed 14.
Yep. Motion to issue order of incorporation for Shatters Fourth Edition.
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Quite right. So, yes, in connection with the election, since the election was approved, we need to order, issue an order of incorporation for Shatters Fourth Edition if you're satisfied with the legality of the election. And I'd ask for your support on that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries. Now we'll move on to the three resolutions authorizing your story, restoration of the following tax deed properties to the former owners of title, RDID 32892. Go ahead, Ben, talk about them.
Sure. So as you're familiar, we have a, we've been going through a tax deed process where the treasurer's office had taken tax deed on eight properties. Of those eight, a total of six had, have paid their past due amounts. I have brought forward three to you today, because the, three, these three were paid at a time where I could put them on the agenda. Next week, I'll bring three others forward to you, to ask for you to return the titles to the original owners. So these three tax certificates, you know, one on Terry Avenue, one on Kiwanis, and one on Melanie, have all paid their taxes. I've listed the payment amounts there for you, and I'd ask for your support on returning the properties to those owners.
All right, so on RDID 32892, look for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
And call the roll.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benninga?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries, RDID 52876. For motion.
Motion to approve.
Second. Bender.
Call the roll.
Barth?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye.
Benninga?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. RDID 54, I'm sorry, 56406. So moved.
Second.
Call the roll.
Bender?
Aye.
Benninga?
Aye.
Hyburger?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, question?
Yes, sir.
So even though they've paid, they also paid a penalty, right, for being obviously multiple years in arrears?
Well, yeah, they pay a penalty. They have a, they're charged 10% interest.
A year.
A year. Plus other, there could be other fees in there, too. Yes.
Commissioner Hyburger?
I think I missed it. Are there still outstanding? Did we have any sales on here last week?
Yeah, I'll give you a little bit of a summary. So of these eight properties, six were able to pay their past due amounts before the auction date. We had an auction on Saturday, which two properties were sold at that auction. I think we had 20 bid bidders present, so I thought the participation was very good. We received what I thought, very competitive bids on the two properties. When, one property on West Russell went for a little over $40,000, and then there was another property in North Janes that went for about $167,000. So I think we had the right people in the room who made for a competitive bid. So, you know, those funds will exceed the taxes due, but we'll, whatever overage will just be a portion to the taxing districts involved, right? Whether it be the Sioux Falls School District, the City of Sioux Falls, or Minnehaha County, they'll get their portionment shares.
Mr. Hyburger?
Were there any evictions in those sales?
No, there were not. There may have been, there may be people living in them. We weren't aware, but we didn't evict any. That will be up to the new owner to decide what to do.
Thank you.
But I will give a formal briefing next week on the sale.
Thank you, Ben. Alrighty. Moving on, then, authorize the chair to sign the third lease extension between First Dakota National Bank and Minnehaha County. Jason, good morning.
Good morning, Jason Gierman, Minnehaha County Emergency Management. You should all be familiar with this. This is a lease agreement for the First, First National and the Fusion Center, and typical that we sign this every year, so.
Make a motion to approve this.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. And then authorize the chair to sign a 2022 local emergency management performance grant, sub-recipient agreement.
Again, this is something that we've done for years, and this helps fund emergency management through reimbursement of salaries for myself and Doug Blomker.[1773.11]
Approval?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Let's have fewer emergencies, okay?
It's been very quiet. That's why you haven't seen me like that.
Uh-oh, knock on wood.
You started with a baptism by fire, no doubt. Yeah. Authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Civic Plus lending legal review, pending legal review. Morning, Carol.
Good morning, Commissioners Carol Muller, Commission Office. The last couple of years, it's been on our list of things to do is to continue with increasing our transparency to the public and public access of items. And so we wanted to move forward with being able to put our supporting documents online. Right now, if you come to a meeting, you can go to the binder, which people who come to our meeting all the time know that that's available for them to go through and do. This will actually make people at home, allow people at home, the ability to look at all these documents. So I'm excited about doing that. I think it's absolutely a good step for the commissioners to go through and take. A few other pluses of doing the software that would go with it is, there'd be a tracking of the agenda progress and sign off by department head and elected officials. Say, for instance, our chair wants to monitor during the week as the agendas are being put together, he can go in and look at all those things as we're doing them. So, very hands-on ability to do that. We will eliminate paper and scanning of paper copies. We will have all the documents, will be published to the website for public review. This is great. I was pleased to see this. The public will be able to search documents. Let's say, for instance, we're two years down the road, and somebody from the public says, I want to see what the commission all did related to medical marijuana. They can go through and search the documents online for that. I think that's a great step forward for us to be able to do, along with staff and elected officials, to do that. The commission recorder will have the ability to convert the agenda into minute formats, eliminating the need to retype names, agenda items, motions, et cetera. We got really excited when we saw that, because the commission recorder will have the ability to just check boxes on her system as she's doing it, and it will, to use a term from IT, will automatically turn that into sentences for the minutes to be able to have. So we're excited about the efficiency that that will be able to have. The public will be able to request the system to email them when new material is uploaded to the website. And for each of you, you will have your own, I don't know if portal's quite the right word for it, but you will have your own login into the system. So when you're reviewing at home, you can go through and annotate the notes, the agendas and the materials as you want to. And then when you come here, you'll log in on the iPads, and you'll be able to pull all those notes up. And you are going to be so incredibly pleased with how your notes come through, and you can ask the questions that you had at home over the weekend when you're reviewing the material. So, we will be moving forward to this. Tentatively, our goal is the first of January for the commission meeting and the building committee, that we would have this up and running. It's about 12 to 16 weeks for implementation. Obviously, there's some training, getting everybody on board for it. It is a change, and we always know that change can be both invigorating and challenging at the same time. So that will be a big progress for us to move forward with, but we truly feel that this is exciting for us to be able to do. The first year's payment to Civic Plus will be $10,286, which includes startup fees. The year two cost will be $8,589, uh, $89, sorry. The startup costs include consulting, virtual training sessions, template design, and configuration. So, the contract is just in final review with a few minor details, and that's why you're seeing it brought before you today, because we want to get this done by the end of the month with the, just pending legal review by sign off by our state's attorney. So I would be here for any questions that you may have. I want to do a shout out to IT, Melinda Tyler, our auditor Ben Kite, who sat through and did some of these. Scott Anderson from planning sat through on some of the demonstrations also, but provided great input. And we got to this one, and to be honest, the comment, I think most of us all made was, why would we not do this? The efficiencies and the transparency it brings to the table are great. I will state that our neighbor to the south, Lincoln County, started using it earlier this year. And in talking to their IT director, he has great things to say about them and their customer service. And the other ones that we did research were like $20,000 and more. So this was much less.
Commissioner.
So $10,000 the first year, $8,000 the second, and then after that?
It's, 5% is what's written in.
Okay.
For an increase.
Follow on. How much do we spend on paper? Every day I work a tree, does, but...
Well, I, you know, we're getting better at it all the time. I was really pleased last week, we've just implemented DocuSign, and I said we had one contract that we did that never touched a copy machine or a printer all the way along. So we're slowly moving towards doing that better.
One more thing that wasn't really clarified in your supporting documents was that it can also be used for planning and zoning and their meetings, and they run a ton of paper, too. So we will have less paper that way. Also, it will enable those people who are looking for past planning meetings that talk about K4s or talk about any of the other planning issues, that they can search those out. And so those documents will also all be online, and I think it will cut down on more, less trees being cut down going forward. So exciting. And also, the cost, great rate of return. I'm sure we will see huge savings in, in staff time, more so than the cost of this. So I'm in support.
Okay. I get my only question. This is a fairly, well, not a fairly, it is a large project. Who do we, is this going to be Tyler's project to see the implementation of, or who's doing some kind of manages project?
You know, I, that's a good question for us. Really, I'm going to look to my, my partners on this, which has really been the auditor's office and IT and our office. The three of us have really come together and have started working together on that.
Okay. I'd like to see, you know, one owner, I guess, for the county.
We will do that.
So that one point of contact, to make sure the process is handled properly, so...
And every department will end up having some training on this, because everybody submits documents. Some departments have multiple people that submit documents, so we'll train in that. And for instance, for a department that maybe has four people that submit documents, they can set that up so that there's accountability along the way for a supervisor to sign off or a department head or elected official.
Yeah. I think somebody needs to manage that whole process, so...
I just had, I just had another thought, not really related to your management thing, is that when we get down to things like liaison reports, you'll be able to log all your notes in this document and not have to be carried like me. Maybe not you, but tons of little teeny pieces of paper with my liaison reports on it. And so I think, for me, that's going to be a huge benefit, because sometimes I even forget. And so it'd be nice to be able to log them on the software.
I had not thought about that either. I think you guys will find multiple uses for doing those. It'll be very convenient for you.
All right. Look for a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second. Bender?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Speaking of liaison reports.
Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Last night, I missed the, the planning and zoning meeting. In fact, as you know, I had a meeting at City Hall, and I, it was apparently a tizzy and missed it. My understanding is that the meeting was expedited by about half an hour due to my absence. Scott is here to report on, and actually, our, Mr. Boge is also, I'm sure, present last night.
Anything to add, Scott?
I know that Jeff always likes to sort of tell you the, the highlights of the meeting, and we really, so the highlights for last night was, we approved the final development plan for the wedding barn out by the VA, out by the VA cemetery. So that, we'll be seeing a big construction project there of like a new event facility. And then the other thing of note, we approved the gravel pit for Great Bear Sand and Gravel, which were the successful purchasers of our land that we sold back in February or March, whenever that was. So, those two items were probably the highlights of the meeting last night.
Scott?
And a gravel, but it's way out west. It's not by Great Bear.
No, it's not by Great Bear. It's, it's west.
In the gravel, there was no opposition to it?
No, there was no one there opposed to it. So it was on the consent calendar, and the applicant was satisfied with the conditions, and there was no public there, so it just was approved on the consent calendar.
Other liaison reports. Just one for Commissioner Barth. Go ahead.
Yeah, okay. A couple of things. I was able to attend the LINK board meeting last week. Commissioner Karski had a conflict, and so they do have a new executive director in place, Bill Early. Seems like he's really jumped in with both feet. Was very, gave a number of good reports, is really looking hard at the financials, and had a lot of great input. And just want to thank publicly Steve Lindquist for the tremendous job he did in getting the LINK launched, and hope he enjoys his third or fourth retirement now. Not quite sure how many times he's tried to retire. But a lot of positive information provided at that meeting, you know, never-ending challenges. They gave a report on one, one individual, and just kind of the number of times in a, a year that that particular individual interfaced with either law enforcement, or the emergency room, or utilized other services. And it really is breathtaking when you can, when you see how much somebody who's really cycling or really experiencing a lot of either mental health or addiction issues, how many times they interface with services, and how, how tremendous the financial case is, let alone the personal life story, to try to get that cycle broken and get the person into some sort of long-term treatment. And so that particular person had finally gotten into treatment, so there was a celebration involved in the story. And so that was, that was helpful. So I really, I really appreciated the opportunity to, to sit in on that meeting, because it was very fascinating. And then, secondly, I went to the Sioux Falls Development meeting last, last week as well. We met over at Augustana University and had the Augustana team do a presentation. Lots of great things happening at Augustana right now, a lot of positive energy. COVID numbers are down, and they're announcing groundbreakings and celebrating new programs. And so I think that's tremendous for our community in building up bench strength here. And they also spent a lot of time talking about Foundation Park and plans for either acquiring additional land or doing development further north, and how that impacts Highway 130. And so some good discussion along those lines as well. And then finally, just as a point of personal privilege, I would like to welcome my sister-in-law, Felicia Werner, who's visiting from Great Britain, and has not lived in the US for 35 years, so she needed a civics lesson, and came to the county commission this morning. So, thank you.
Welcome. And today at 5:00, the, we'll have a briefing at the joint meeting with the city councils, Sioux Falls City Council on the LINK. So, opportunity probably for Bill Early to be introduced to the, more so to the public. So looking forward to that briefing after their first four months in operation, basically. So, other liaison reports?
You had one.
Yeah, I do have, yeah. The reason I couldn't go to the LINK board meeting is Commissioner Barth and I had a conflicting meeting with the multicultural center, intergovernmental board.
Board.
Yeah, it's a long title. Anyway, one of the things that the multicultural center is in the midst of is a search for a new executive director. So the exec, or the multi, the intergovernmental board is asked to have some voice in that process, a little bit anyway. So, we did meet again yesterday with the mayor and a few other staff people. But basically, just kind of, you know, what, where are we going with the multicultural center? And literally, where are we going? Because after 20 years, the multicultural center's lease with the county is also up next June, so you'll be hearing and seeing more of that discussion. So there'll be some activity there. What, how can we facilitate success within the multicultural center and that operation? So, doing what we can, I guess. More to come. New business? Old business? The only thing I have, Carol, is we have a building committee next Tuesday. Are we going to do that at 8:00? Is that going to be enough time?
You know, once we get through the OACs today, I can have a better feel for that.
Okay.
I know that, I don't want to request you guys to come in at 7:30 if we only have 20 minutes worth of business. So, conversely, I know that there have been times starting at 7:30 has been really good. So once I get through some, a meeting today and some information, we will know better.
That'll be posted by Friday for notice of public meetings. Okay?
Yes.
Okay.
Just a couple additional things. Just wanted to clarify that, that next Tuesday on medical marijuana will actually be the third hearing, not the second hearing. So as we catch that, maybe in the minutes on that. And then just, next week, you guys will meet, and then the following week is not a regular commission meeting. You will have a different type of commission meeting in that you'll be taking a tour of the county. We've been doing that pre-COVID. Had been doing it, I think, three different times. COVID threw us for a loop on delaying everything. Usually, we do it in the spring of the year. But that will be October 12th, and you will be leaving at 8:00. More details will be coming out, but you're going to get a chance to get out in the county. I know that's been a highlight of the year, and I've always enjoyed it. And I know the people that you get a chance to visit with have enjoyed that also. So we appreciate our partners in county economic development, who are working with us on that.
Excellent. Commissioner?
On our last reading, is that when the fee structure is going to be on there? I thought it was going to be today, and it wasn't, so...
Eric?
Sorry. Is the fee structure going to be in the third reading, or do we deal with that at a later point? I'm sorry, Eric.
Yeah, no, I apologize. I was reading, I actually think Carol's wrong on the label. But the, the issue of the third reading is a separate document. I actually thought it was going to be on today's agenda. Now that it's not, it's not an issue at all. But it will be a separate resolution that you'll look at and adopt, separate again from the licensing ordinance itself. So the theory for all of the commission is that the, the fees, I feel, are best set separately. And then you can amend those annually, if you wish, without having to go in and do a whole set of first, second reading, adoption of an amendment to the ordinance, so...
Yep. So that'll be next week, more than likely.
Right, yep.
Thank you.
Good question. All righty. No other old business or new business? Moving on, then. We're going to go into, look for a motion to go to recess, and we'll reconvene at 10 after 5, 10, or 5 after 10.
I'll second that motion, Bender.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, same sign. We are at recess for nine minutes.